Is Luther Van...
Do what?
Just get him a mental.
Oh, my goodness.
Good evening. I would like to call the regular city council meeting of October the 9th to order. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilwoman Erin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bliss? Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Rohrbach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grabstein?
In the absence of both the mayor and Mayor Protem, can I now get a motion to appoint Dave Soltis as the acting mayor for the purpose of chairing this meeting of October the 9th?
Your Honor, so moved.
She didn't.
Oh, am I supposed to... Okay. Motion by Emily and seconded by Toya. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's up to you now.
All right. Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Grabstein and Mayor Protem Bliss? They both gave notice.
Your Honor?
Yes, support.
Support.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to excuse those two.
Okay.
Because there was no motion. We needed a motion and a support, so.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by...
So then it's...
To excuse.
Which?
Rohrbach.
All right, I'm sorry.
It's all right, whatever.
Councilwoman Rohrbach, seconded by Councilman...I'm already in shot.
Fleming?
Fleming, thank you. All right, to excuse Mayor Grabstein and Mayor Protem Bliss, all those voting say yes?
Yes.
Aye.
All those say no?
Yes.
No. So, motion passes. All right, so let's go on. Invocation tonight by Council Rohrbach. We ask if you can please stand.
Bonjour. Emily Jane Rohrbach, Indigenous, Cherokee Nation, Bunch, Oklahoma, Onjiba, Michomas, White Earth Reservation, Onjiba Nakomas. My name is Emily Jane Rohrbach. My grandfather is from Cherokee Nation, Bunch, Oklahoma. My grandmother is from White Earth Reservation. I speak these words in Anishinaabe Mowin, the language of my grandmother Jane, who was a Jibway. I've acknowledged my grandmother Jane in these chambers before and today, after the September 30th National Day of Remembrance for Indian Boarding School children, Nakomas Jane was one of the children taken from her home on the White Earth Reservation and forced to forget her language, her culture, her people. She was lucky, though, because she survived. Thousands of Native children across the U.S. and Canada did not. Today is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Madison Heights. I pray we all have renewed focus on this history where erasure in attempts to sanitize the dark history and treatment of Native Indigenous people endured for centuries and still exists. Indigenous Peoples' Day is a step forward to reconcile harms of the past and to uplift the vibrant and diverse culture and traditions of modern Indigenous communities today. We acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day today, and we also acknowledge the fraught and terrible legacy of war, conflict, death, and destruction, not only here in this land, once solely occupied by the Anishinaabe people, but also across the world, from Ukraine to Israel, from Palestine to Burkina Faso. The people, regular people, are the ones who too often pay the ultimate price in these conflicts. Let us bow our heads at a moment of silence for those lives lost in conflict, for those who have endured and continue to endure in the face of destruction. May each of us strive to be a beacon of peace in this broken world. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up is the approval of the agenda and additions and deletions. Seeing that we have no additions or deletions, we move on, and the meeting is open to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address counsel. Please direct your comments to me and keep those comments to three minutes, please.
Peter Richard Taylor is challenging Sheriff Rodman, Wasen Grabstein, Tim Burns, Joe Longo, W. Burnett Jones, Dennis Winkler, Mike Blanchard to come to Madison Heights Council Chamber on October 10th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. to on cameras, to Peter, to deny Madison Heights, Ferndale Pontiac is charging Peter Richard Taylor with case number 0062694 disorderly. That is breaking... Nor show... And cruel and unusual punishments inflicted. W. Burnett Jones is black, who acts in severe ... Things been spelled out, spell it. S.E.R.V.I.L.E. manner towards Joe and Joe and Burnett fear on freedom of the press.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, Vida Palazzolo, Janar, Madison Heights. I'm here tonight to not only reach out to the council, but reach out to the entire city of Madison Heights. Some of you are aware, and I've already spoken to Mayor Grabstein about this about a week ago, there's a woman, and actually I've spoken to Toya also, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Erin, there's a woman down staying living in the bus stop at Eleven Mile in Janar, Wright, where Tellway and CVS are. She's one of us, you guys. She's a regular person, like you said, Emily. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Rohrbach, I know you guys, it's hard to do this. She's been there for over a month. I got to know her about three weeks ago. I saw something on Facebook that was alerting people to this. Some of it was very crude, some of it was putting labels on her. She has a name, her name is Lisa. She lost her job because she had a few strokes, and the company let her go after 14 years. She was renting right here in Madison Heights, I will not give out her street. She lost her car. She has nothing. But she does, she has us. And I am pleading that anybody that wants to help her, come see me. I'm not going to do a GoFundMe. I'm not going to play that game and let the percentage go to a page and have people write nasty comments. But I'm going to put a post out there on the same page that had the original one, and if anybody wants to throw in three, four, or five bucks, whatever they can, because every one of us are going through stuff. I lost my house in 2017. I lost my job in '16, lost a house in '17, December, January, boom. I had friends that took me in. I was very, very lucky. She's got nobody. At least that's what she tells me. But she's got us, you know? So what can we do? You know, I know we all have connections, you know? I think I've reached out to every connection I can think of. Shelters are full with waiting lists like crazy. McRest that has the rotating beds at churches does not start till December when it gets cold outside. My furnace went on the other night. I don't know about you. It's cold. So if you can do something, see me, message me, whatever you have to do. But, and the police, you guys have been phenomenal. They have been sending, you know, police around to check on her, make sure she's okay. CVS is letting her use the restroom, coming to get warm. Tellway has been great to her. One of the gals there chipped in and was able to get her a room at the rest in for one night last week. She needs more than one night, you know? So if we can get...if we can get her a week, that would be awesome, you know? She needs a shower, she needs a bed, you know? So...that's it. Message me. I'm on Facebook.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight? All right, so seeing that there is none, we're going to close the public comment and move on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Your Honor, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Your Honor, a second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Wright and seconded by Councilwoman Erin to approve the consent agenda. All those voting say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those say no? Motion passes. All right, so under the reports, we have a resolution to opt out of Public Act 152. City manager, please.
Public Act 152 as amended limits the amount public employers pay towards employee medical benefit plans beginning January 1st of 2012. City council is required to make an election for its choice of compliance for the subsequent calendar year annually. Given that all of the city's collective bargaining agreements approved by city council provide for a 10% employee premium sharing, council is requested to opt out of Public Act 152 as allowable under that statute. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve a motion to comply with the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act by opting out of the cost-sharing model as set forth in Public Act 152, and this does require five votes.
Okay, so we have a call for motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that council approves an opt-out of PA 152 as allowable under the statute.
All right, do we have a second?
Your Honor.
A second.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Rohrbach and seconded by Councilwoman Erin to approve the resolution complying with the requirement of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act by opting out of the cost-sharing model as set forth in Public Act 152. All those voting say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those say no? Motion passes. All right, moving on, under bid awards and purchases, we have a purchase of a replacement ambulance, rescue vehicle 713. City manager?
Rescue 113 is scheduled for replacement in the adopted 2024 fiscal year budget. The new ambulance will replace a 2015 Freightline ambulance with 108,000 miles. The new ambulance will mirror the two most recent Ford 550 Road Rescues. The city will utilize its interlocal purchasing contract with the Houston-Galveston area council and we, as we have done with the past five fire department vehicle purchases. The cost is higher than expected, exceeding the budget by $58,000. This is due to the road rescue no longer has a 2022 Ford chassis and will now use the 2023 half chassis. Second, there is a severe drop in the Ford GPC discount. However, we secured additional funding over the trade-in price received from Emergency Vehicle Plus by selling a Freightliner to the city of Ferndale. Should the council wish to proceed with the purchase of this replacement vehicle, 713, two motions will be necessary. Staff recommends that council approve both of these motions. The first motion would be to adopt a budget amendment to increase the sale of fixed assets by $47,000 and increase the expenditure line item vehicles by $58,039.70, and this will require five votes.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council approves the 2023, the purchase of a 2023 road rescue from Houston-Galveston area council cooperative purchasing program, Emergency Vehicles Plus in the amount of $353,039.70.
I think we need, my mistake, we need above, excuse me, budget amendment to increase the fixed assets by $47,000?
Yeah, we just need the budget amendment first. Before we approve the purchase.
Gotcha. Sorry about that.
No.
So I move that council approves of...do we need two budget amendments or just one?
You can make it in one motion.
Okay. So I move that council makes a budget amendment to increase sale of fixed assets at account number 101-0466730000 by $47,000 and to increase expenditure 101-336985000 of vehicles by $58,039.70.
All right, do we have a second?
Your Honor, support.
All right, support. So we have a motion to approve both...
Just the budget amendment.
The budget amendment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those say no? So it passes with the five votes, and then the motion, we have the motion already, right?
Yes, just needs to make it again. Just make a new motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 road rescue from the most qualified bidder, which is the Houston-Galveston area council cooperative purchasing program, Emergency Vehicle Plus, in the amount of $353,039.70.
Okay, so do we have a motion to second?
Your Honor, support.
Support. All right, so we'll vote on that to approve the replacement of the vehicle, 713, a purchase?
Your Honor, I did just have a quick question. So as a part of this process, is we're going to sell our Freightliner to Ferndale's Fire Department?
So that is the reason why the increase of the sale of fixed assets, that's a revenue line item by $47,000. So the fire department sold our current vehicle to them for $47,000, and that offset the amount actually that we were paying above. So the total cost is $58,000 more than we budgeted, but we're really only going to have to take about $11,000 from fund balance because they sold the vehicle for $47,000.
Awesome. Great work, guys.
Is there any other further discussion? Seeing that there is none, we have the motion to vote. Those who in favor of it say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who say no? Eyes have it. It passes. Seeing there's no more business before city council, can we get round robin comments with Councilwoman Erin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first say I'm so glad that we passed that ambulance purchase. I had the opportunity to go to Fire Ops 101 this weekend, last Friday, and it was phenomenal. I thank Melissa, thank the chief lieutenant for having me there. I got a real official firefighter hat. I meant to bring it tonight to put it on. For everyone that has not went through this, you guys really need to go. I'm telling you, I understand today why firefighters are so fit, because you have to be in the best shape. Had I not, had I been where I was at last year, I would not have made it through. Climbing uphill would have exhausted me and I would have walked back to my car. So it was really, really a great experience, and I appreciate everything that our firefighters do for us. And, you know, it's just amazing because when you think of fighting fires, we thinking that that's all they do is fight fires, but they're out there doing so much more, and they have to be appreciated way more than they are. So thank you again for being my handlers and for taking great care of me. They carried my bags and everything. It was just wonderful. Also, just this Saturday, this Saturday, October 14th, there'll be a vendor fair at Wilkinson Middle School from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with over 30 vendors. So if you guys aren't doing anything, I know we have the Motorama on that day, so you can move from both areas and support everything. I think it's going to be a really phenomenal event. Have everything from photo booths to jewelry, Christmas ornaments. If you came last year, a lot of people were able to get a lot of Christmas gifts and things like that. So something very fun for the community to do. Looking forward to seeing you all. And that's all I have tonight.
I was going to let you just turn it over to me before I went.
It's you.
Acting is amazing.
Yeah, so be it.
Yeah, I did the fire ops training last year. It is fantastic. It is a great, like, look into what our first responders go through, you know, the equipment that they have to carry. You're right, you do have to be in shape. It's not a game. So, you know, kudos to you guys because, like, just having to put that equipment on and the sense of urgency and your blood rushing in itself is like, that's tremendous. So, you know, thank you guys for all the different things you do. I did want to say, yes, 14th is Motorama and Smoke. I want to invite you guys to come out. If you have a classic car, come on out. If you have a cool new school car, come on out. So it's going to be fun. The fire department I know is going to try to make it. The police department said they're going to bring out the Diplomat. So if you guys don't know what a Diplomat is, it's kind of what we are, but in the form of a car. So they're going to bring out the Diplomat. There's going to be a couple other cool cars there. This is happening rain or shine, meaning there's no makeup date. So I've been, trust me, I've been keeping my own weather. But come on out, come see some cool cars, come celebrate. I know there's the firehouse, too, is having an open house that day, too. So stop by, have fun. One other thing I wanted to share is outside of my duties on city council, I serve on the board of the Michigan Association of Infant Mental Health, and next week is Celebrate Babies Week. And so you guys, the first 1,000 days of a baby's life is, like, crucial to their entire development, and their ability to comprehend at three can really help determine what their reading level would be at the age of five. So I'm also a trusted messenger for talking as teaching. So next week, celebrate babies, celebrate the folks who deal with the early development of kids, and you guys should see more of that on the Michigan Association of Infant Mental Health website. So other than those two things, I will pass the baton.
Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening. Thank you. Our city manager?
I have nothing today.
Clerk?
I have something. I just wanted to let everybody know that early voting is happening here in the city of Madison Heights, and not actually in the city, but in Royal Oak for the city of Madison Heights. It begins October 28th, and it'll run through, that's a Saturday, and it'll run through Sunday, November 5th. The location is the Royal Oak Community Center, and that is at 3,500 Maris Avenue. That is north of 13 and east of Crooks. The hours will be 8:30 to 4:30 every day, except for Thursday, when the hours will be 12 p.m. to 8 p.m. In addition, if early voting is not your thing, you want to get absentee ballot, those are also available through the city clerk's office. And the election is to, and if you want to vote in person, you have that option, too. The election is Tuesday, November 7th, and the poll, all polls will be open between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
All right, Counselor Rohrbach?
Okay, great. So Motorama and Smoke, very exciting. I'm super excited for that. The Friends of the Library book sale is coming on Saturday, the 14th, over here at the library. Fire Station 2 Open House is also on Saturday at Fire Station 2. The Wilkinson Sale is also on Saturday. It's a big day in Madison Heights on Saturday. So, you know, I think that if you plan it right, you can start out first thing in the morning and make the rounds. You can hit all of the things and have a pretty amazing day in the city of Madison Heights. So I hope to see many people, all of you here, the six of you here in the audience, but everybody on, that's watching us on YouTube, please come out and join us for these wonderful events. It's going to be a great time. I'm also going to mention that on the 28th of October is the trunk or treat. That is hosted by our Parks and Recreation Department that is going to be here at Civic Center Park. It's going to be an up-close and personal look at the trucks that keep our city functioning. So from DPS to police and fire, they're going to be, they're going to be out there, and people can come out. It's free from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. on October 28th. Again, an amazing day to be in Madison Heights. And finally, and by panic just now, I can't find the date, so I think it's the 22nd, maybe the 21st is... It's the 21st. Thank you, the 21st, is what formerly known as the Pumpkin Walk. Vida can help me with the name. It is now called...
It's Trail of Treats.
Trail of Treats. And there's going to be a sign up. I don't know if it's out there yet, but the sign up to, for people to sign up to attend that, there's going to be great, great activities, again, happening out here. Lots of fun activities during the spooky season, so I hope everybody can come and join us and, you know, be part of the community because that's what it's about. Thanks.
Councilman Fleming?
Yep. So I just got one thing tonight is that a lot of people have been asking about the charter amendments. It's really important that there are these, city manager, not the city manager, but the city clerk has made some videos about the charter amendments that are posted on the city's Facebook page that are also on YouTube, and then you can watch them over there. It's really important that you get to know what they're all about, and if there's any questions, you can always contact the city clerk, get probably the writing of them all also. That's it for tonight.
All right, well, thank you for staying here with me bumbling all over the place with this. I think it's the first time in, I've done it in nine years. And I couldn't help but thinking Corbett, he used to sit right across from me forever. And so there were times when, you know, he would, he would make jokes or something or faces, and so then I'm like, you know, I'm trying not to laugh, but he never, he never chaired a session. And so, and I always said, well, I never really wanted to. And so, and he was like, well, I can understand why. And so, but anyhow, so I appreciate your patience on that. It's just, you know, it's one of those things. But other than that, the business is finished, and I call this meeting adjourned. meeting adjourned.